Mm-hmm.
All right, it is now seven oh one. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Stephen, it's, okay. So do, do we stand?
Yeah, let's go ahead and raise your hand over your heart in the pledge of allegiance. Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make the motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Jane, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chang, and thank you, Mrs. Chong. I would like to do roll call and acceptance of the motion. So that's Mr. Chang.
Aye.
Mr. Barbary?
Aye.
Mrs. Chong?
Hi.
Mrs. Lynn?
Hi.
Mrs. Ryan?
Aye.
And this evening, we are without our student board member. She had a prior commitment, so I'm just letting everyone know. All right, so the motion has passed. All right, so the Board of Education has adopted Board Policy ninety-three twenty-three B. This is to ensure the public's right to be heard in any matters pertaining to the San Marino Unified School District. Persons who wish to provide public comment will have two options to submit public comments. So you may submit through an online form or request to speak during the meeting through question and answer and phone dial-in. To submit through an online form, the public was asked to submit public comments for the open session on March twenty-nine from eleven to three thirty P. M. The comments received during this time will not be read during the meeting, but will be provided to the Board of Education. And then the submission went on bit.ly SBOE three-two-nine-two-one. The public comments through question and answer during the meeting will provide opportunities for the public comment, and they're offered at the start of the regular open session for items on the agenda prior to the public meeting. The Board of Education reserves the right to add a public comment here prior to any individual item on the agenda. Five minutes may be allotted to each speaker, maximum of twenty minutes to each subject matter. However, in the event there are more than four speakers on the same subject matter, the Board President retains a discretion to adjust and limit the time allocated to each speaker to ensure that all wishing to speak will be heard within the twenty-minute allotment. During public comment, the meeting will pause for one minute to take requests to speak. The raise-your-hand function is used to take requests during the public comment period. For online attendees, press the raise-your-hand icon to add yourself to the queue, and for phone attendees, dial star nine. The speaking order will be determined based on the order of requests received. Individual speakers will be unmuted and then called to speak. At this time, it is communication from the audience regarding matters on the agenda are to be made at this time. This is an informational item.
Okay, President Ryan, we will pause the meeting for one minute to take requests for matters that are on the agenda. So go ahead and start that timer. And if you would like to make a request to speak regarding matters on the agenda, please press the raise-hand icon or dial star nine if you are joining us by phone. And we will continue to pause. We have thirty seconds remaining. If you would like to make a request to speak, please press the raise-hand icon or dial star nine. Ten seconds remaining. If you would like to speak, please press the raise-hand icon or dial star nine. Okay, President Ryan, we have four requests to speak. May we begin?
Thank you, Dr. Troy. And so that means that each speaker will have five minutes allotted to them. Please keep the timer.
Okay, our first speaker is Letty Aranda. Letty, your line is now open.
Thank you. I was just calling in because earlier I was able to click on the resolution number seventeen and save the document, but now it doesn't seem to be responding. So I'm not sure if it's just me or if it's something that Stephen, you need to be aware of. I just want to make sure everybody is able to get the information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Catherine Oliveros. Catherine, your line is now open.
Thank you. You can hear me?
Yes, we did.
Yes. Great. I will not take five minutes. I know you all want to get down to business. But good evening, school board members, Dr. Wilson and district administration. I've asked to speak tonight as a parent volunteer and with the support of fellow parent volunteers, Marissa Kelly, Allison Muller, Helen Spitzer, and Becky Watlington. We would like to thank the school board for working so vigilantly to place a parcel tax renewal measure on the June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one ballot. I think we can all agree that our schools are the heart of our community. As a parent and in my volunteer roles, I've seen firsthand the positive impact that Measure E funding has had for our students. And we really cannot highlight enough the importance of the necessity of stable, reliable, long-term funding to ensure an excellent education provided through outstanding teachers and programs that benefit all of our children. I cannot imagine what our schools would look like over the next six years without these monies. This is why we look forward to once again working for the passage of this critical funding before it expires on June thirtieth. But actually, also like to address the community members listening tonight. Now is the time to decide who we are going to be. Are we going to be the community of strong schools with a steady educational future for our children? Are we going to be the community that empowers our elected decision-makers and district leaders to plan our way into a solid future through secure funding, thoughtful feedback, and trust? Are we going to be the community that empowers our teachers to build and teach programs that will remain available as our youngest students move through their school years at each level? Now is the time to move San Marino through this recent crisis and be the community that provides the best for our children through securely funded schools and amazing teachers. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Erin. We have Erin B. Erin, your line is now open. Erin, your line is now open.
Can, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now. Thank you for unmuting. Your line is open.
Okay, great. Good evening. As president of the San Marino Schools Foundation and on behalf of all of our committed trustees and volunteers, we want to commend the school board for accelerating the renewal of the parcel tax as soon as possible, which is planned for June twenty-ninth. Since nineteen eighty, the San Marino Schools Foundation has played a pivotal role in supporting our teachers at each campus and excellence in education in our school districts. This excellence is empowered through two major sources that depend on local community support, one of which is this critical parcel tax that we must renew this June, as well as the donations that come through the San Marino Schools Foundation each and every year. First, we want to thank the community for the amazing and tremendous support that has been overwhelming really over the last couple of weeks. It is critical that we build on this support and we bring together all of the energy and the enthusiasm into this renewal election, which is so critical for our campuses. We again thank everyone for their support. We thank you for your donations. And we want to let you know that your voice is critical in this. Let's come together. We can absolutely do this as a community. This is an imperative that we come together to support this election, that we ensure the legacy of our schools, that we ensure the integrity of the classrooms, the excellence in the classrooms, and the education that we provide each and every day. And all of our trustees are willing and ready to step up to really lean in and really support all of our campuses in this really, really critical effort. That will be a historical moment for our school district. As Catherine said, this will be the moment that will differentiate us. This will be the moment that will set us apart for the future legacy of the families to come in San Marino. So please join us as we come together heading into this critical election this June. And on behalf of the foundation, we again express our sincere appreciation for all of the support engagement of the entire community. Thank you so much for the time this evening.
Thank you. And the last request is from Nam Jack. Nam, your line is now open. Hi, Nam, your line is now open.
Thank you. Good evening, President Ryan, school members, Mr. Chang, Mr. Barbary, Mrs. Chong, and Mrs. Lynn, Superintendent Wilson, and the rest of the administration. I would like to thank each and every member of the board for continuing to work so diligently in trying to do what is best for our schools by recognizing the crucial need to go out as soon as feasible for a parcel tax to ensure stabilized and sustainable funding for six years to benefit all our children. I would like to volunteer my services, step forward, to help coordinate this campaign for what has to be one of the most important issues facing this district. Because if we don't pass this measure this time, this June, the landscape of our educational community is subject to drastic change with serious repercussions for our students, our schools, and our community. The importance and potential consequence, if it is not passed, cannot be minimized. It affects every child, every parent, every San Marino citizen. So my sincere hope is that we can all come together with one singular focus in mind, passing Measure E on June twenty-ninth. Thank you.
Dr. Troy, you're muted.
Thank you. President Ryan, we've completed the four public comment requests. And we can go ahead and move on to the next.
Thank you. Thank you so much to our callers. And this next section, I get to use my gavel again, right? So I'm going to call in. The public hearing section.
The board. Sorry.
Oh, Dr. Delatory. Sorry, I keep taking everyone's part.
It's okay.
Dr. Delatory, please.
President Ryan, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Wilson, and executive team. The district hereby gives notice that a public hearing will be held at this time regarding consideration of a resolution calling for an election for voter approval to renew an education parcel tax. The board will conduct a reading of the resolution shortly after the hearing. Dr. Troy?
Okay, thank you. Similarly, we'll go ahead and pause for one minute to take requests to speak during this public hearing. If you would like to make a request to speak, please press the raise-hand icon or dial star nine. We have thirty seconds remaining. If you would like to speak for this public hearing, please press the raise-hand icon or dial star nine. And we have ten seconds remaining. If you would like to speak, please press the raise-hand icon or dial star nine. Okay, President Ryan, we have one request.
All right, go ahead, Dr. Troy. We're still going to allot the five-minute time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our speaker is Letty Aranda. Letty, your line is now open.
Thank you. As demonstrated, as demonstrated at tonight's board meeting, it is obvious that everyone is fully engaged in keeping teachers and counselors and specialists where they belong in San Marino classrooms. If passed, the renewed Measure E will go far in saving jobs and sustaining our district. We feel nothing but gratitude towards our community members, our board, who are working to keep our schools whole, open, safe, and keeping our teachers where they belong in classrooms at our beloved San Marino Unified School District. Thank you, thank you. As we come together, I know we're going to do great things. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Troy.
And that concludes our public hearing.
All right. So. All right, so the public hearing and comment on the proposed resolution calling for an election to approve renewal of the district's education parcel tax. This is Dr. Linda Delatory.
Thank you, President Ryan, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Wilson, and executive team. This evening, I will be reading Resolution Number Seventeen. I want to point out that this is a singular reading of the resolution and that this evening, district personnel will be requesting the board's approval and adoption of Resolution Number Seventeen. Due to the fact that there were some last-minute edits to the resolution, each board member should have received an email from me with a redlined version and also the revised version, which was also attached to the agenda this evening. And I did check the link and it is working. So members of the public will fully understand the changes that have been made to the resolution that is now being posted. And with that, I will begin the reading. Resolution Number Seventeen, twenty-twenty-one, Resolution of the Board of Education of the San Marino Unified School District, calling an all-male ballot election for voter approval of an education parcel tax. Whereas, the mission and purpose of the San Marino Unified School District is to provide high-quality public education to its students and the community. And whereas, the district believes schools with high-quality teachers and strong academic programs in math, science, engineering, technology, and robotics are essential for our local students. And whereas, the district has implemented a number of changes to generate sufficient funds for its education programs, including expansion of local fundraising efforts. And whereas, funding for the district from the state of California and other sources is inadequate to provide the level of support to the district's educational programs that the residents of the district expect. And whereas, Article thirteen A, Section Four, and Article thirteen C, Section Two of the California Constitution in Sections five zero zero seven-five and five three seven-two-two of the California Government Code permit a school district to propose the adoption of a special tax for specified purposes and to levy an education parcel tax following approval by at least two-thirds of the voters voting on the measure. And whereas, the governing board of the district proposes to renew the levy of the special tax known as Measure E at the existing rate upon parcels of land within the district for the purposes set forth in this resolution. And whereas, the current special parcel tax known as Measure E has been in place since two thousand and nine and is currently at the level of nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars per year assessed against each parcel and is due to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. And whereas, stable locally-controlled funding is needed to protect our neighborhood schools' academic excellence, enhance student success, retain highly qualified teachers, limit class sizes, and preserve advanced placement courses that help students qualify for the best colleges. And whereas, unless Measure E is extended by voters, the loss of four-point-one million dollars in annual funding will result in a reduction of teachers, support staff, and educational programs. And whereas, pursuant to Government Code Section five zero zero seven-five, five zero zero seven-six, five zero zero seven-seven, five zero zero seven-nine, and five three seven-two-two, Election Codes Sections one-one-zero-zero, four thousand, and four thousand one hundred and eight, and Education Code Section five-three-two-two. A school district may, by resolution of its governing board, conduct an election to be held within the boundaries of the district on an established all-male ballot election date. And whereas, pursuant to Elections Code Section one-one-zero-zero, no election shall be held on any day other than a Tuesday, nor shall any election be held on the day before, the day of, or the day after a state holiday. And whereas, Election Code Section four-one-zero-eight-A states that notwithstanding any other law, regardless of the number of eligible voters within its boundaries, a district may, by resolution of its governing board, conduct an election by all-male ballots pursuant to Division Four, and Election Code Section four-one-o-eight-C states that an election conducted pursuant to this section shall be held on a date prescribed in Section fifteen-hundred or on any other date other than the established election date. And whereas, Tuesday, June twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, is a permitted all-male ballot election date pursuant to the provisions of the Elections Code. And whereas, in the judgment of this board, following public hearings and comment, it is advisable to request that the Los Angeles County Registrar/Recorder call an all-male ballot election and submit to the voters of the district the question of whether the district shall levy a special tax within the district for the purposes of raising additional revenue for the district by renewal of the special tax known as Measure E. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the San Marino Unified School District as follows. Section one. This board finds and determines that the foregoing recitals are true and correct and that this resolution shall constitute an order of election pursuant to California Education Section five-three-two-zero. The authority for ordering the election is contained in California Government Code Section five-zero-zero-seven-five and Section Four of Article twelve A and Section Two of Article thirteen C of the California Constitution. Section two, this board hereby proposes to continue to levy a special tax as described above to mitigate the negative effects of below-average California state funding for the district to preserve the excellence of our schools and community, and to preserve highly qualified teaching and counseling positions. B, preserve advanced programs in math, science, engineering, speech and debate, and robotics. C, maintain advanced placement and honors courses. D, preserve core academic curriculum, including English, math, social studies, history, and science. E, minimize increases in class sizes. F, preserve visual and performing arts instruction, world language offerings, physical education, and athletic programs. And G, maintain classroom technology support. Pursuant to Government Code Section five-zero-zero-seven-five-point-one, the board determines that the proceeds of the educational parcel tax shall only be applied for the purposes stated above. Section three, the education parcel tax described above shall be assessed annually against each parcel in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars to account in part for the impact of inflation on the cost of delivering the classroom programs and student services supported by said education parcel tax. The base annual tax, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars, shall be adjusted annually by the lesser of the increase in the Los Angeles Statistical Area Consumer Price Index, or three percent. In the event this index is no longer published, the board shall adopt a comparable index of general price levels as it is reasonably determined. The educational special tax shall be levied in each fiscal year commencing with the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year of the district for six full years, which shall expire on June thirty, twenty-twenty-seven. So the words, "which shall expire on June thirty, twenty-twenty-seven", was a last-minute edit and is different from the resolution that was posted yesterday. The board, in its discretion, may levy a reduced adjusted amount for inflation in any year in which it deems such reduced adjusted amount sufficient and appropriate to meet its purposes stated above or believes such reduced adjusted amount is appropriate in response to state budget changes. As used herein, the term parcel means any parcel of land which lies wholly or partially within the boundaries of the district for which the Los Angeles County Assessor has assigned an assessor's parcel number. Provided, however, that in the event any such parcels are one contiguous, two, used solely for owner-occupied, single-family residential purposes, and three, held under identical ownership, such parcels made by submission of an application by the owners thereof to the board in accordance with rules and regulations adopted by the board be treated as a single parcel for purposes of the levy of this special tax. Section four, subject to voter approval as set forth below, the education parcel tax shall be levied commencing with the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year of the district and shall be collected with and in the same manner and subject to the same interest and penalties as general ad valorem taxes collected by the Los Angeles County Treasurer and Tax Collector. The special tax itself shall not be an ad valorem tax, but shall be based on the rate specified in this resolution and related parcel tax measure. In accordance with the requirements of Government Code Section five-zero-zero-seven-five-point-one, the district shall create a separate account into which the proceeds of the special tax shall be deposited. Section five, the levy and collection of the education parcel tax is not intended to decrease or offset any local, state, or federal government revenues that would be otherwise available to the district at any time during which the education parcel tax may be levied. In the event that the levy and collection of the education parcel tax would have such an effect, the district shall reduce the education parcel tax to the extent that such action is necessary to restore the amount of the decrease or offset in other revenues that would otherwise occur. Additionally, any person who is sixty-five years of age or older and the owner of a parcel used solely for owner-occupied, single-family residential purposes may obtain an exemption from the levy of the education parcel tax by submitting an application of such owners to the board in accordance with the rules and regulations adopted by this board. Section six, the board shall provide in each year for any increase in the district's appropriation limit, as shall be necessary to ensure that proceeds of the education parcel tax may be spent for the authorized purposes. Section seven, this board hereby determines to include within the ballot pamphlet the full ballot text and substantially the form attached heretofore as Exhibit B, which is hereby approved and adopted by the board. The county registrar is hereby requested to include the full ballot text in the ballot pamphlet to be published and mailed for the election scheduled for Tuesday, June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. The abbreviated text of the ballot proposition with respect to the foregoing measure shall read as follows. To protect the quality of education and continue San Marino's tradition of community support for local schools by retaining highly qualified teachers, continue funding advanced programs in math, science, engineering, technology, provide honors and advanced placement classes, and maintain class sizes, shall the San Marino Unified School District shall the San Marino Unified School District measure to renew its expiring nine hundred and sixty eight education parcel tax for six years be adopted, raising approximately four million annually with annual inflation adjustments, exemptions for seniors, and all funds staying local. Section eight. The measure set forth in Section seven shall be submitted to the voters of the district via an all mailed ballot and an election to be held on Tuesday, June twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. The board requests that the measure be designated as Measure E. If approved by at least two thirds of those voting on the measure, the measure shall take effect commencing fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. The board shall provide in each year for an increase in the district's appropriations limit as shall be necessary to ensure that the proceeds of the special tax may be spent for its authorized purposes. Section nine. This resolution shall stand as the order to the county registrar to call an all mailed ballot election within the boundaries of the district on Tuesday, June twenty nine, twenty twenty one. Pursuant to Section four of Article thirteen A and Section two of Article thirteen C of the California Constitution, California Government Code Section five zero zero seven seven, and California Elections Code Sections one one zero zero four zero 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 and four one zero eight, an all mailed ballot special election shall be held within the boundaries of the district for the purpose of voting on a measure which will be presented to the voters substantially in the form attached hereto as Exhibits A and B containing the question of whether the district shall impose a special tax for the educational purposes stated therein, except that the election may be consolidated with another election as specified below if such consolidation is feasible and appropriate. If the district election is consolidated with an election to be held within the boundaries of the district, the board hereby requests that all, that the county registrar or other appropriate election official of the county perform all actions necessary in connection with the preparation for and the conduct of the election. Section ten. Pursuant to Section five three oh three of the California Education Code, the board hereby requests that the county registrar take all actions that are necessary or appropriate to hold the election in accordance with law and these specifications, including but not limited to printing and mailing sample ballots, arguments and applications for absentee ballots, canvassing election returns, and certifying the results of the election to the board. The board requests that the county registrar deliver a copy of all published notices to the secretary of this board pursuant to Section one two, one one three of the California Elections Code. The board hereby agrees to reimburse Los Angeles County in full for any services performed by the county for the district upon presentation of an invoice to the district. Section eleven. The secretary of the board is hereby authorized and directed to immediately deliver a copy of this resolution to the Los Angeles County Superintendent of Schools to the county registrar as the officer conducting the election and to the Los Angeles County Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. The county superintendent is hereby requested to prepare and execute a formal notice of parcel tax election and consolidation and to call the election by causing the notice to be posted in accordance with Section five three six two of the California Education Code no later than ninety days prior to the date of this election, March thirty first, twenty twenty one, or otherwise cause the notice to be published as permitted by law. The secretary of the board is hereby further authorized and directed to post a copy of this resolution on or near the doors of the district office in three public places within the district and on the district's website for at least two weeks before the date of the election and on the district's website. The secretary of the board, the county, or the county board shall also provide or cause to be provided notice to non resident property owners in accordance with California Government Code Section five four nine three zero. The board requests that the county superintendent deliver a copy of all published notices to the secretary of this board. Section twelve. If any section, subsection, phrase, or clause of this resolution is for any reason found to be invalid, such section, subsection, phrase, or clause shall be severed from and shall not affect the validity of all remaining portions of this resolution, which can be given effect without the severed portion. Section thirteen. The president of the board and or his or her designees shall prepare and file with the county registrar any ballot argument prepared in connection with the election, including a rebuttal argument, each within the time established by the county registrar and in accordance with all laws applicable to such process, which shall be considered the official ballot arguments of the board as a sponsor of the measure. Section fourteen. The members of the board, the superintendent, and officers of the district are hereby requested and directed individually and collectively to provide accountability measures pursuant to Government Code Section five zero zero seven five point one that include but are not limited to the following, A, a statement indicating the specific purposes of the special tax, B, a requirement that the proceeds be applied only to the specific purposes identified, C, the creation of an account into which the proceeds shall be deposited, and D, an annual report pursuant to California Government Code Section five zero zero seven five point three as provided in Section fifteen. Such accountability measures shall be set forth on the ballot in the form of Exhibit B attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Section fifteen. The board shall pursuant to California Government Code Section five zero zero seven five point three file an annual report as provided herein accounting for the education parcel tax revenues collected and the manner in which they have been spent. The annual report shall contain both of the following, A, the amount of funds collected and expended, and B, the status of any project required or authorized to be funded by the special tax. Section sixteen. Subject to two thirds approval of the voters, the education parcel tax shall be collected by the Los Angeles County Assessor's Tax Collector at the same time and manner and shall be subject to the same penalties as ad valorem property taxes collected by the tax collector. The tax shall bear interest at the same rate for unpaid ad valorem property taxes until paid. Any tax levying shall become a lien upon the properties against which taxes are assessed and collectible. Section seventeen. The district superintendent, president of the board, or their designees are hereby authorized and directed to take such other actions, execute any other document, and to perform all acts necessary to place the measure on the ballot, including making any changes to the text of the measure described in this resolution or to the abbreviated form of the measure or to the text of this resolution, and to take such other actions and execute such other documents as may be convenient or necessary to carry out the purposes of this resolution and or to comply with the requirements of elections officials and the requirements of law. The foregoing resolution was adopted by the Board of Education on San Marino Unified School District. We modified, it was originally regular and we changed that to a special meeting held on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty one by the following vote, and we added a line after this motion was made by. So that is just to capture the vote of the resolution and going down to the next page. This is the superintendent's statement, certifying that this information is accurate in terms of the vote. And again, we changed the word regular for special meeting and added in the date. Going to the next page. This is Exhibit A, which is an abbreviated text of the measure, and this is the same language that I read in the resolution. Going down to the next page. Exhibit B is the full ballot text, and below that, preserve San Marino schools. Again, you see the same language being repeated over and over, amount of education parcel tax period of assessment. That's language that was in the resolution as well, and I just want to point out under exemptions for seniors that we struck the word annually because it is no longer required that seniors who apply for the parcel tax have to apply annually. So we struck that word. Okay, going down. And then you see Exhibit C, which is formal notice of parcel tax election. That's a form that we're going to have to send to the county superintendent of schools. And that's it. And with that, I will be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
There was one more also on the resolution number seventeen, not sixteen, that the secretary of the board is signing, just wanted to make that note as well, you didn't mention that, but I see it was
Oh, yes. Yep, it was adjusted, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Delatory. I want to kind of open up by speaking to the community. We are so grateful that our community has supported San Marino schools with local funding from Measure E since two thousand and nine. But I agree with our foundation and our PTA members and with Mrs. Jack that if Measure E is not renewed, the district will face devastating losses. That's why we, as a board and as a school district, have been working tirelessly with the teachers and with our community to ensure that there is an opportunity to put this on the ballot again before, before the parcel expires. I just wanted to say that out loud and make sure everybody hears how hard the district's working, how we've come together with the teachers, with foundation, and with all the stakeholders to make sure that we are doing this and we are meeting the needs of our students and the goals of our community to deliver the best educational experience that we can for the students. Any other, would anyone else like to say anything or add?
Just a point of order, would it be appropriate for comment now or to take action and then have board member comment?
I think we can take action and then have our comments. So then I'm asking for a motion.
So wait, so hold on, so this is, so this is the only item on the agenda tonight, there's not, right?
That's correct.
There's nothing else.
So would it not be more appropriate that we speak before the matter was approved?
No.
I'm suggesting that the motion be taken and a second and then an opportunity for the board to weigh in, or I think we can go it the way.
Fair enough, fair enough, so we're not voting yet, we're just moving it forward. Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve the resolution as read.
Thank you, Mr. Barbary.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. And so we're opening up to comments before we do roll call. Okay, all right.
President, in the meantime, I saw the panelists, there's two guests. Would you might give us an introduction, yeah?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Delatory.
Sorry, okay, so we have Joy Tartaka from, is it TBW?
The.
Yeah.
TBWB.
TBWB, sorry, I apologize, and she is a strategist that is working with the school district currently. And then we have Anne La Marina Roline, who is from Norton Rose and Fulbright. She is counsel on all things parcel tax and or bond, but tonight we have her here for any technical questions that the board may have that are legal in nature, she is happy to address.
Okay, since we already have an introduction, so my question will go to Anna. So I just want one more time to make sure the election on the June twenty nine is effective and can carry once we are through and then we can carry the money to put the money and carry it to the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. Can you, I cannot say that re-certify, but I, you just speak out.
Hi, Trustee Chang, yes, so should this board elect to approve this resolution and the district send the approved resolution to the county registrar of voters and the voters approve the parcel tax by at least two thirds vote? Then it's my understanding that district staff has confirmed with the county assessor that the tax would be effective for the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chang.
And
Any other board member?
I have one more question. And the second question from the resolution, so we roughly, we are collect the four, four point one million. So is that right? So I know that we probably have more than four thousand, how so? So equal to the parcel, so each one is a nine sixty A. So, so we are able to collect the four million if deduct for the senior exemption.
Yeah.
So how much he would still have to pay for in full entire the list of the teacher?
Um, okay, so Board Member Chang, I believe your question is how many parcels do we have or how much money are we collecting? We're collecting approximately four point one million dollars, and that is, is what the district is currently netting. And that doesn't have anything to do with the exemptions, we have approximately a thousand exemptions right now. So we're not collecting anything on those parcels, obviously.
Yeah, my question, eventually, how much we collect and then we can pay for the list of the teacher, that's my question.
Yeah, there's approximately thirty three certificated members of the bargaining unit that are on the accountability report tied to Measure E funding. So provided we get the four point one, we should be, I mean, it'll be up to the board, of course. Those positions, you know, should be saved. The timing is the issue, though, on this because, as you are aware, the school year ends at the end of May, and the district is required pursuant to statute to notice teachers prior to May fifteenth after the hearing, so there's going to be a little bit of a gap in time for us that we're going to have to work through.
Thank you.
There does not appear to be any comments or questions?
Shelley, this is Jane.
Oh, thank you.
I had my hand up, I don't think you could see me. So first, I just wanted to say thank you very much to the district staff for working on this. This is a super fast turnaround, and I know that there have been many other tasks that have been also being performed simultaneously, so I really want to thank the district staff for all of the work that they've put into this. Crossing Ts, dotting Is, literally up until the last minute and ensuring that we are in compliance legally as well as really responding to the community about any concerns that are being raised. And I wanted to point out something, I was negligent in recognizing this last week that correct me if I'm wrong, but Joy Coomer was the one who first even raised it to us that we actually would still be able to go out for the June one because we had been getting conflicting information. Not because anybody intentionally was misleading us, but simply because you know, people on bereavement and changes in the laws and so many different circumstances between the lawyers and strategists and the county assessor's office and the registrar's office, and thank you, Joy, very much for being on top of what what the county allows in terms of our tax assessments because I think without your raising that notice to us, we would have let this opportunity slip by. And so I really do want to just say thank you for being on top of that and working with us on that. And I want to say that I think there was a lot of conversation about whether or not we would bring back a measure this quickly, and I want to say that in response to the community, that's why we're doing this because we all know that this money is really important for the next school year, and we know that it may not necessarily come in time to rescind those layoff notices by May fifteenth. And but it is so critical to ensure that we have a future ahead of us for years to come. And so I did want to say that I know that there's concern about how that money works out, and we are not going to waste it, it is not in any way going to be wasted regardless of where the money is coming from now for fundraising efforts or for the future because we are still looking at Because we are still looking at rising costs in the years ahead of us. And so this parcel tax money really does help us considerably in not having to face this every year. So I'm really encouraged and grateful that we're able to bring this back to the community. To tell us whether or not this is what they want with the second time to vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Chang.
Hey, can I go next?
Okay, Mr. Barbary.
So, so I just, I'd like to add the thanks, obviously, to the, those that have been thanked already, the district staff and and Joy and everybody who's been able to get us this far. And I especially like to thank NAMJACK, who's done a ton of work already to really shake the trees and get, get people moving on this and really recognizing this, there was this opportunity there. Really started asking the questions of why aren't we doing this or what can we do? So I think, thank her for her leadership, helping us through. It's been a great, a great help to have somebody working on this already. And so I, I'm hopeful that she continues to help us through the once this is passed and or if this passes, I guess we need to say. And, and with the actual measure on the ballot, I think she's a great, a great voice in our community to be able to help with that. I kind of, kind of following with what, what Jane just said, you know, it is, it is quick to bring this back. But you know, I've heard, I've heard a lot of support for it. Obviously, we did have some concerns with the, the previous measure that didn't have a sunset. So we fixed that in this one. So we've, we've, again, we thought we, we heard from the community and that we did a survey and thought that the community was going to support it without the, the sunset. Unfortunately, that, that, that didn't work out for, for whatever reasons, I won't, you know. But, but we fixed that on this one. So this really is just a straight renewal of what's already out there. And I feel like the community, I've heard from so many in the community that they did have that one concern. And either didn't vote or didn't vote for it because of that one concern. So, so absolutely listening, absolutely heard that. So we're bringing it back just exactly like, like it's been for, for quite some time. And I just encourage everybody to, to, to vote and to, you know, to listen if you have questions about where the money goes or how the district runs, to continue to listen. I think there's been a lot of good information in the last few board meetings, especially about how we spend our money and about how little actually goes to things other than in the classroom. You know, we're, we're a small district and, you know, yes, we, we spend maybe fourteen thousand dollars on average per student. But that's an average, that doesn't mean every next student costs us fourteen thousand more to educate. You know, there, there are some costs that come with running a district, like having a, a district office, though ours is very small. You still need a superintendent and you need, you need the, the staff to, to run all of the various departments. And some of them are here with us, obviously, tonight. But I, I, I just feel like you, you can't get away with, without a Linda or, you know. And certainly without, without a Jeff, a superintendent that's going to lead us. And so there is some cost to that and that gets spread across the students. So when you look at how much we spend, you know, on average per student, so you can't just, you can't just assume the next student is going to cost us that much more. In fact, you know, we may, we may spend fourteen thousand, we may only get ten thousand approximately as part of the base grant. But if that next student doesn't even cost us ten thousand to educate, there's, it's so much less. If you think about a classroom, kind of like an airplane. If you have seventy five seats on the airplane and you've only sold fifty tickets, that fifty first, fifty second, fifty, all of the rest of those up to seventy five don't cost you as much. Maybe it's a little bit more, maybe you have a little bit more fuel, a little bit, you know, more cost here and there. But it doesn't cost you the full fare, the plane's going to fly anyways, just like a classroom. We're going to have a teacher, we're going to pay to keep the lights on, we're going to clean the classroom. Yes, adding a student to that classroom may cost a little bit more. It may, we may need more books and materials and supplies. It may cost a little bit more to clean the classroom, but it doesn't cost that full average cost to put that student in that classroom. Now, we shouldn't be taking a student that makes us open a whole new classroom. Because that does add a lot to the cost and that's not, my understanding is that's not what we do. We're looking at an acceptable level, not jamming the classes full, but an acceptable level of students in each class at each level. And only adding students where we have capacity. And that's, I think, the critical thing that I really like to have the community hear. Because by adding a student or taking a student away, taking a student away doesn't save us fourteen thousand dollars. A lot of those costs still get spread across the, the remaining students and we lose the ten thousand. So adding a student doesn't really cost us four, four thousand dollars. And I really think that's an important thing to say here because I've heard that argument a lot in our community that we need to look at the out of district students, we need to look at at why, why we have those. Many of them are part of our community, many of the out of district students are, are kids from our teachers. And that's one of the, almost one of the benefits we offer our, our teachers to allow their, their kids come here, come to school here. It's great that they want to bring our, bring their kids to our district. And, you know, I, I think that it would be really unfortunate if we, if we scapegoat those. And just that that's the reason for our problem. If we lost the, I don't know, maybe you can nod, six to seven hundred students or so that are out of district. You know, we're going to lose, we're going to lose seven million dollars.
Yep.
And and people, people start arguing, well, we should just close down one of the elementary schools and we'd save that. Well, yeah, we, maybe we'd save about seven million dollars, but then we'd still need this measure. It, it's not going to make up for the, the four million dollars in addition to all of that because we're going to lose the revenue from those students. And so I really feel like people need to, if you, it's great that people want to be engaged and they want to learn more about the district. But I encourage you to listen to the board meetings, go back and look at, look at some of the presentations that have been given. Everything's recorded, you can listen to the actual presentation that's been given. I encourage you to be involved and really understand it. And then let's have a dialogue about this. If, if, you know, if we need to continue to look at decreasing costs, which I think we need to keep focused on that, we need to make sure we run a very lean district. You know, in, in a couple of years, we have another measure that we can look at. If we've saved so much in, in the next four years that we don't need or we can adjust measure R, that's great, we'll look at it then. That's, that's, that's part of this process. But right now, the most prudent thing is to get this passed because there's, we've seen what it's going to do, it's going to cut thirty three positions and it's, and it's going to make the class sizes of the elementary really big. And, and we're going to lose a lot of programs at the high school. It's, it's really just not, not something we can do right now. So I guess that's, that's my piece, I'm, thank you for, for listening.
And Shelley, may I?
Mr. Barbary, go ahead, Mrs. Chang.
Yes, I would like to say thank you to the district staff for working really hard and being really diligent about getting this on the ballot for June. And I know that a lot of people in the community have reached out to me directly about how to raise money, what grassroots things are going on to help. And so thank you to everybody who is just working so hard to, you know, make sure we don't lose these very, very important teachers. I've seen lots of emails go around. We all value the staff and the teachers so very much. And so, of course, all hands are on deck to get this measure passed. And I also recognize that the district staff is also working to get all of the schools open, all of the kids back who feel like they are ready to come back. And also putting the strategic planning meeting on the calendar, really appreciate that as well. So I know that you're doing a million things and juggling a lot of balls and really appreciate your diligence with all of it for our students. The one question that I have that maybe can't be answered tonight, maybe it's for the next board meeting. But I know that there are a lot of community members and teachers wondering what happens in that interim between May and June. And of course, we are all fingers crossed that the Measure E does pass and we have the money. But I think a lot of people are wondering what happens in that interim and what can we do? So that all of these fabulous, wonderful teachers don't leave and leave our kids and go to another district. So I think that's the main question that people have tonight. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Any other, alright. If not, I'd like to do roll call vote. Mrs. Chenlin?
Hi.
Mrs. Chang?
Hi.
Mr. Barbary?
Hi.
Mr. Chang?
Hi.
Mrs. Ryan?
Aye.
And the motion has passed, alright.
Thank you.
So, Mrs. Ryan, can I jump in for a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before we adjourn? Okay, great. Well, first of all, I want to, I want to thank the Board of Education, I mean this from the bottom of my heart. Each of you provided really valuable input just in the last week here. And I hope you recognized your voice in that resolution somewhere because each of you were in there at some point. So first, thank you so much, thank you for standing by us. This has been an incredibly time-compacted period, right, where lots has been going on and I appreciate that you recognize that, thank you so much. I'm just, you know, sitting here just warm because I'm so excited that we're fortunate that NAMJACK has declared her interest. And stepping up to head the Measure E campaign. You know, unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to work with NAM as a board member, but, but her legend lived on. And so for me to have the opportunity to have this relationship with NAM right now is just so great for me to just learn so much for her. But I believe she has the most excellent qualifications, the experience with respect to parcel taxes and really the knowledge of our community. You know, NAM is a former two-term school board member. And she was previously PTA president at Valentine and Honeyton Middle School. And by the way, in my experience in three districts, some of the best board members were PTA presidents, I got to tell you that, right? Because they just, they had their finger on the pulse of the community and the kids. And, and NAM was just a wonderful PTA president for us before she became a board member. She's a former San Marino Schools Foundation trustee who chaired the annual campaign during her tenure. She perhaps has had the most experience as a community member with respect to parcel tax measures. As she has chaired three successful parcel tax campaigns. In fact, she co-chaired the very first Measure E camp, campaign back in two thousand and nine. And then again in two thousand and twelve. So first of all, thank you so much, NAM, for being willing to step up in, in the time of our greatest need right now. And then I'm just so excited by the enthusiasm we've witnessed over the last weekend through the generosity of our community. Just amazing. And really, the enthusiasm feels like a huge wind in our sails. We've heard the community, as Mr. Barbary noted, with regards to the previous parcel tax. And I'm just thrilled that the board has taken action to simply renew Measure E exactly in its present form. So with that, I just have a heart full of gratitude for our board, our community, especially for NAM tonight. And thank you as well, as Mr. Barbary noted, Joy was there. I got, it was great, I mean, right after we realized Measure E had, had gotten through, Joy reached out to me with a little email and just said, hey, let me do some research for you. And that's just tremendous that she was able to identify a pathway forward for us, so thank you, Joy. And that's it, thank you, Mrs. Ryan.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson, yes, Mr. Chang?
Yes, I also like to add the additional comment. As you know, the last school board meeting, we have a lot of people make a comment, I think at least fifteen people make a comment from the teacher, from the PTA. And today, we have a four public comment. And also we have a one before public comment, so all is a five cup public comment. So that including the, our teacher and the Starbuck Union, the, the leadership president. And also we have a PDA council president, Caddy. And also we have a San Marino School Foundation president, Aaron. So I, I think this time we, we get the whole party bracing. And also most excited, you know, my colleague, previous colleague, NAMJACK, also come back to help. So I, I, I think with that, I hope that tonight, audience, if you recognize Measure E is very important to our community, to our teacher, to our student, please mouse out, yeah. So I think this is the, 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 the last opportunity we can bring the teacher back, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chang.
And so. Oh, this is Jane, can I just say one last thing? I just wanted to reassure the community that this is not us trying to do things the same way we always did things. This, just because we're doing this, it doesn't mean that we're not going to be doing the work ahead. As Mrs. Chandler mentioned in terms of our strategic planning. This is sort of the launching point to really bring us forward to what we need to do as a district to be stronger as we come out of everything we're in right now. So I just wanted to, the community, to understand that, that we're all really committed to figuring out what the next steps are.
Thank you, Mrs. Chang. And I want to just wind up with joining Mr. Chang in thanking NAMJACK and her work in reaching out to a lot of the groups, the stakeholders, and doing all the work to support us. And the things that we're doing to support the students and the teachers. So thank you so much, NAM. With that, is there anything else that we, is there anything else okay on the agenda? Alright, so with that, I'm going to close the session. Yes, alright. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thanks, everybody, have a good evening.